Okay, good evening, thank you. I'm gonna read this letter. It's addressed to Leslie Delkey, who's in Winona. She works at the library, I believe, librarian. And it's from Sherri Pringle in St. Petersburg, Florida. Dear Leslie, thank you for our enjoyable conversation today. As we discuss and closes, the check for $1,000 to be used for the children's department in some way that will encourage children to read books. The donation is being made in honor of my parents, Mike and Gene Paskowitz. As a child growing up in the east end of Winona, your library was my sanctuary, my special place. I spent many wonderful hours in the library those times. Those memories still remain very precious to me. Thank you for all that you do to enhance and inspire the lives of children through the fascinating world of books. Sincerely, Sherri Pringle. Very good. Okay, then I just have one other thing. As you know, the city, as well as Winona County, are members of the Minnesota High Speed Rail.
Commission?
I'm the chairman.
That's what I was gonna say.
But, and we've been meeting regularly, and as you know, our route, the Empire Builder Route, was selected as the preferred route for eventual high-speed rail trains, which eventually will come. It's gonna be awhile, but eventually they will come. And right now, our goal is to, to at least keep the awareness of this going, that it is something that we wanna see go. This is an election year, and I think, you gotta be honest, high-speed rail is not a really high priority of all the people running for office. So, I think that this will happen as funding through the years becomes more and more available. Right now, Minnesota is doing an environmental study on the route from McCrescent to, to St. Paul and Minneapolis. There was, there was always talk that Wisconsin has opted out, but what Governor Walker did is he opted out of the Milwaukee to Madison route. But he's still open to looking at the existing route, which is what our line is. One of the things we, we are doing is we're getting some promotional stuff out, and I'll just pass this around. We've got cities in Winona that are on the route, fasten all donated a couple of bolts that we're gonna put on here, and some other things. But we are also working with freight, with the freight people, because that is very important as far as the passenger rail goes, because the freight companies also receive a benefit from this. So, that's one thing. And then also, another thing that we're kinda working on that too is a second train a day from Chicago to the Twin Cities, and that study is presently going on. And there's a couple different options to that. One option would be a, just Chicago to St. Paul, an extra train a day. They're also looking at from Chicago to St. Cloud and then back. And then, another one where the, the train would terminate adjacent to the Twins ballpark, so in case anyone wants to come up from Chicago and watch the Twins play Chicago, they can get right to the park. So, there are some options going on. As we know, if you, if you into this at all, you know that a lot of times that Amtrak train gets hung up from the west coast to Minnesota because of either floods or snow or whatever. So, the second train a day, which would just be between the two points, Chicago and the Twin Cities, would give us a better option if you wanted to go to Chicago to do something and come back the next morning or whatever. So, we are continuing to work on that. Judy, you guys?
Just one thing to add to that, Mayor. We will be attending a workshop up in the Twin Cities with Amtrak on repairing the historic stations of Amtrak. And so, we'll be seeing what programs they have out there and how we can work with them to work on our station here in Winona.
If you haven't had an opportunity, I would ask, suggest that you go up and look at Union Station now. It's really a, a piece of history that's being brought back, and I'll tell you, they don't make buildings like they made that one. It's really something to see and watch as that will continue to grow throughout the years. Monica, call.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig Alexander.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
White. Here. Under the petitions request and communications, item 3.1 is an application for liquor licenses for Broken World Records. William Shalane has applied for these licenses to be effective September 1st through June 30th. This is the former Tiger, Tigers Bar at 265 East 3rd. And Mr. Shalane is here if you have questions.
Okay, George?
Could he explain what his operation will be?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Yep, come on up.
It will more or less just be a standard bar. The record thing is probably only gonna be about 5% of the revenue.
So, you'll be, you'll be selling records, or?
Yes, that's more or less the theme of the bar.
Okay. So, records from old or from?
Used records, yeah.
Used records, okay.
And rather than a jukebox, there would be records playing and have a handful for sale. But as I said, 95% of the revenue would be alcohol sales, and this would more or less just be a theme.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah.
When, assuming approval of the license, when do you intend to open, sir?
First weekend September, first weekend after Labor Day.
Okay. Thank you. That's kind of a neat name, Broken World Records. Are you selling broken records?
Hopefully not.
On the heels of the Olympics, you know, it's the appropriate.
All right, any other, George?
Would you be serving any food or anything, or?
I understand to serve alcohol on Sunday, I would have to have some sort of food, maybe just minimal with frozen pizzas or something like that. But I do not intend on opening the kitchen at this time.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
I would move approval of the request to grant the license.
Moved by George, second by Debbie. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry on.
Item 3.2 is the application for liquor licenses for the Wild Boar. James O'Meara and Ryan Wentz have applied for the liquor licenses for the former Brothers Bar at 129 West 3rd. Effective dates would be August 7th through June 30th, and the gentlemen are here if you have questions.
Any questions? George?
If they could explain their operation.
Okay.
Wild Boar is quite catching for a name.
I figured that question was coming. My name's Ryan, this is my business partner Jim. We are going to be a full-service restaurant and bar. Hamburgers, pork sandwiches, appetizers, you name it. We own a restaurant in Hopkins, Minnesota, and that menu's a little bit more extensive than what we're gonna have here in Winona, just based on our hood space and things of that nature. But we're gonna get as much great food underneath that little hood and coming out of that little kitchen as we possibly can. So, we wanna be full for lunch, dinner, happy hour, every possible time of the day.
Is it a sit-down restaurant, or?
We're probably gonna have 12 tables or so, and then obviously all around the bar. But yes, a sit-down restaurant. Some video games, pool tables in the back, we're gonna build a little game room.
Al, you got a question?
Yeah, same question, when are you planning to open?
Hopefully, upon approval, August 22nd, 21st, in that range. Our rent is paid through August 20th, so we'd prefer to obviously open as soon as we can.
Start revenue flowing.
Exactly.
Okay, any other, George?
Would you be open seven days a week?
We will be, yep. Most likely from 11:00 AM until bar close.
Okay, then Mr. Shalane, will you be open seven days a week as well, or?
Eventually, start with, it would be each day.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
To approve that question.
Moved by Michelle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Al, questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the liquor license for Wild Boar? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry on.
Item 3.3 is a request to hold the Maury Miller 5K run on Saturday, September 15th. Move to approve the request.
Moved by Debbie. Second by Michelle, questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 3.4 is a request to close Grand Street for the annual block party on Saturday, September 8th. I'll move to approve the request.
Moved by Michelle, second by Al, questions?
Just a comment, I think it's noteworthy that this is their 23rd block party this year, so it's pretty good.
Okay, on Saturday, September 8th. Okay, all in favor of that motion, which is to approve the request for Grand Street? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, carry on.
Item 3.5 is a request for the closure of High Forest and St. Charles Streets for a neighborhood block party on August 26th, and these streets would be closed between Second and Third Streets from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Move to approve that request.
Moved by Debbie, is there a second? By George, questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request for the block party? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 3.6 is a request for docking at Levy Park and the closure of Cal-Fremling Drive by the American Cruise Lines for the Queen of the Mississippi visits to the city on the date shown.
Move to approve that request along with the closure of the road.
Okay, moved by Al, second by Michelle, questions? Does anyone know, I talked a little bit to, visit Winona, and they are gonna try to get some kind of entertainment or something like we used to do, I think, down there, so it could kinda be cool.
It's good to have a boat back.
Yeah, but it's not as big a boat. I think it's 150 capacity, something like that, but it is good to have it back. Okay, questions? All in favor of the motion to approve the request by the Queen there? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 3.7 is a request to hold the annual Lake Winona Manor Fireworks Show on Tuesday, October 2nd.
Move to approve that request.
Moved by George. Second by Al, questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request for the fireworks? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 3.8 is a Winona State University banner request for the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event. The banner would be posted August 8th through the 15th. Move to approve, second.
Moved by Debbie, second by Michelle, questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the request by Winona State? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the transit grant application for 2013. And once again, the grant will provide 80% of the gross operating costs for our system.
Move to approve the following resolution.
Moved by George, second by Michelle, question?
Monica, just for clarification, maybe I'm reading this wrong. I know it says 80% of the gross operating cost is by state and federal grant, right? 100% for WSU funds, 100% the Safe Ride program, and also funded by WSU and St. Mary's. But then it does say the balance of operating costs is funded through cash fares and bus passes. But in the resolution, it's saying the city of Winona agrees to provide a local share of 20% of the total operating cost and 20% of the total capital costs. So, we've got 80%, and then we've got 40%.
Mayor and council, the resolution is the standard form that Minda requires. This year, we are not applying for any capital costs. Had we done it, they would provide also 80% of capital costs for the purchase of new buses. But however, we're not requesting any capital funds, it's only operating funds.
Okay, so that's why you have 20% operating and 20% capital costs in the resolution?
Because they require that we use their format.
Okay. All right, so it's a little bit confusing now.
And the next item will pick up some of the costs.
Will pick up some of it, the Safe Ride.
Okay, questions or comment? What's our fare now? How much is the fare?
The cash fare is $1, and it's discounted if you buy the tokens, if you're a student or senior. It's also discounted if you buy monthly bus passes. They're $34 a month, unlimited ride for adults.
Now, with that dollar, can you transfer?
You can transfer once in the same direction. But it does not provide for return.
So, if you go back, you need another? Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the transit grant application? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 5.2 is the renewal of the Winona State University Transit Service Agreement for the 2012-13 academic year. Move to approve that request.
Moved by Debbie, is there a second? Second by Michelle, questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is to, the approval of motion was to renew the Winona State Transit. All in favor, passed unanimous.
Item 5.3 is to set a recess meeting to certify the results of the city primary election. This meeting will be held next Thursday, August 16th, at 4:30 PM.
Move to set that meeting date? Moved by Al, second by?
Al, second.
Michelle, questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to set the recess meeting? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 5.4 is a deed restriction for the DNR grant for the dock system at Lake Lodge. I'll move to approve the request.
Moved by Michelle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Debbie, questions? Question?
Not quite with this, but it did remind me, maybe think of docks, and when I keep, I know I asked this probably last year, the year before, where are we maybe for Dix Marine and Prairie Island, you know, launching docks for boats, 'cause they're in pretty poor shape? 'Cause I've had other boaters, you know, come to me over the years and wonder about that.
We don't have plans and specifications for that, but we have it in the budget for doing it. Specifically, we've been talking about the ramp at Dix Landing, which we know caused problems for a boater this year, tore up one of the tires. We've done a temporary patch on that, but as long-term, we need to replace it. So, we don't have the plans ready for it, but yes, we plan specifically to do the one at Dix Landing.
And could we, you know, keep maybe on, on the dock about Prairie Island as well? I think that's a little bit rough, or at least have it for discussion, that's got a place somewhere for discussion. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the deed restriction for the DNR grant? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 5.5 is the hazardous structures demolition for the summer kitchen and garage at the property at 659 West 4th Street.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you remember back in October 2010, we, you issued an order for her to repair her roof, restore her water service, and get rid of these two hazardous structures. She took care of the roof and the water, but has failed to do the two structures, so I guess at this time, we're gonna have to do it, so. We took it to court here recently, the court sustained the council's order and has given us the go-ahead to proceed. Yes?
I was gonna say too, then Steve, then any costs would be assessed back to the property property?
Correct, yes. And we're also asking for up to $10,000 out of the contingency fund to pay for this. Hopefully, it doesn't exceed eight. I kinda got a quote on it. And then, yes, all the costs will be assessed back to the property.
And also, if this passes, or when would you look to get this done?
We'll go out for quotes as soon as we can and get it done as soon as we can, probably within about three or four weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Debbie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by George, questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the hazardous structures demolition? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 5.6 is a 2012-2013 Ask Me Local 1788 contract. Move to approve that, second.
Moved by Debbie, second by Michelle, questions? It's the same as everybody else's. All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the 2012-2013 Ask Me contract? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Abstained.
One abstention.
Item 5.7 is the utility easement from Cornerstone Community Church to the city of Winona for the sanitary sewer service to 1275 Lake Boulevard.
I would approve the attached resolution.
Okay, moved by George, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Al, questions?
Yeah, I have a question, you know, we've done easements in the past, and would this be included, I guess, why are we paying $20,000 for the easement, I guess, is my question? Keith? When are there instances benefiting property owners waived that?
Certainly, that would be up to the providing property owner and depending on the value of that property to them. In this case, this is a, in the middle of town, a residential type lot. It is that sort of value, if they were to divide it off and wanted to sell it, or something along that line, as opposed to other ones which are in the middle of the golf course or something, where it would not be saleable or could be sold off. We also have another easement in here that comes up for the, the other project that we have, which basically is for the access fee, which is $12,000 plus the cost of construction, which is probably another $5,000. So, we're in the $20,000 range for that one also. So, we have a couple of easements in here in different projects about the same cost, again, because they go through a saleable or usable lot.
So, there never was an easement in there?
No, there's no easement. They have no obligation to provide this to the city. It is by far the cheapest for the city to do it through that, even with the cost of the easement. There is no other option. You can't go far enough to get to the sewer.
So, the property owner's saying, well, I can't build on my land, therefore, my land, there's some amount of square feet or whatever is worth this.
That portion of property can never be used for anything except for grass or driveway.
And we can't just go in there and take it, right?
No. You could go through the condemnation process.
But that would cost more than $20,000, right?
Keith, what, whose property is 1275 Lake Boulevard? I looked and looked and...
There's one home there? I don't...
'Cause on the other easements, they say, you know, who or what.
I don't know if I have the name in here, but it's, there's only one home that's at that location.
All right, so somebody's living...
It's a, it's a private residence.
Okay.
And this was brought to the council some time ago, and just to talk about, I mean, not getting a final approval, but to talk about should we proceed with it? And at that time, we talked about the sewer, they're not able to upgrade their sanitary drain fields, so...
They, they don't have sewer there now?
They have the drain, they have the septic system, but they're not in compliance anymore. They're failing.
I thought you couldn't have a septic system.
The state, the state is requiring everyone that has them to either bring them into compliance within two years or hook up to a city line. So, they're in a tight spot, unless they have room for another septic system.
That's correct.
Which they might.
There are a few in town, there's a lot of them right on the edge of town.
Okay. Okay, council, what's your pleasure? All the questions? Did we, we have a?
I made a motion.
We got a motion, okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the utility easement, the payment for it? All in favor of that, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 5.8 is the utility easement from Winona Golf and Dining to the city of Winona for the sanitary sewer line for Sunny Ridge Drive.
I would move, I would motion to approve the attached resolution granting the easement.
Second.
Moved by George, second by Debbie, questions?
Questions. So, how come this one's a dollar?
This one is a dollar, and that's very generous of Winona Golf and Dining to provide it for that. They wouldn't have had to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very appreciated.
Okay. All right, there's a motion to approve the utility easement from Winona Golf and Dining? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 5.9 is the utility easement from Mike and Joe Grant to the city of Winona for the sanitary sewer line extension to Sunny Ridge Drive. Move to approve the request.
Moved by Debbie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle, questions? Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the utility easement for Mike and Joe Grant in the city? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 5.10 is to award the contract for Sunny Ridge Drive sanitary sewer extension to TJ's Trucking and Excavating with a bid of $101,088.44. The engineer's estimate was $97,627.30. The project will be funded from the sanitary sewer fund.
I would move to adopt attached resolution, awarding the contract to TJ's Trucking and Excavating.
Okay, moved by George, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Al, questions? George?
Yeah, Keith, just now, as they begin this project, now, now I'm not, I know where this is at, but I visually, I can't vision the whole area right there. This sewer line, is this gonna be available to all the homes there? I mean, are we gonna run it far enough so that whole area eventually, more than likely, will be the city of Winona?
If you go into item 5.9, page 3, there's a great aerial photo on that which shows item 5.9, yeah. That shows that the red is, the red solid line is the proposed sewer line, the dashed line is what's out in the middle of the golf course. Yes, the answer is, this will extend to 1, 2, 3, 6, 6 homes now, and there's one empty lot. At this time, only one of those homes is being annexed and will hook up immediately, but the other home that we just passed the easement on is also in the process of annexation. So, there'll be, there'll be two for sure, and eventually six.
So, are we gonna run that sewer line to where it shows right now, the whole way through?
We'll make that part of the whole project, we'll do the, do the whole thing.
Then would we be stubbing off the sewer line to each property?
What we'll do is we'll contact the property owners, and if they're interested in annexing, annexing in the near future, then we'll stub it off. But if they aren't, we don't wanna have the stub lines out there causing potential problems in the future, or we may not get in the right spot. In all these homes, the septic system will be behind the house, we don't really know what it would take to hook up to it. So, rather than stub it out and have it be in the wrong spot, and then we have two lines out there, we'll talk to them, if they want it, then we'll stub it out. Not at, you know, and now it'll be our cost, but eventually it would get assessed in that room.
Would any of these homes, I don't know if I'm looking at them here, just at the picture, would, would they be able to hook right onto the sewer line that's on the golf course or not? I know when we toured at that time, a few years back, some of those homes were right on the, right on the back of it. Could they just trunk, you know, if their sewer line is in the back, could they just trunk it down into the golf course line? Or wouldn't that be?
I don't think the golf course would be open to that, and we wouldn't be open to it. It's our, it's our system. We, we would want them to hook up to this system. I would imagine if the situation came up and they showed us that doing it would be a lot cheaper or a lot easier, we'd be open to that. But ideally, if we can hook it up to this and simplify the system, we'll do that.
Well, the sewer line and the golf course, that's our sewer line, isn't it?
That's ours, yes.
So, I mean, we could decide whether they wanna hook up to it or not, that'd be our decision, right?
It's our decision and the golf course's decision, because they'd have to get easements for each one of those, but you're right, it'd be the city's decision. What I'm saying is if it comes in and it's, you know, a third of the price of hooking directly into that one, to ours, I think we have to consider that, just to be fair.
Okay, so I think a couple of those homes are right, you know, right on the back of that course, where it may be a shorter run for them, I don't know. So, and just to make sure these home owners know that, and I know you'll tell them that, you know, the cost is gonna be the excavation in the road, not so much on their own property, so they gotta cut that road open again to stub to that line that can run into several ex, you know, extra thousands of dollars for them.
We certainly like to stub them out if we can, with time of the project.
That's all, thanks.
Eventually, with that new law, they'll all become...
Oh, yeah.
We're seeing that all over, Pinecrest, Valley View, anybody that's trying to sell a home.
Well, something's gonna be hurting Homer, they're all in trouble.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to award the contract for Sunny Ridge Drive to TJ's? All in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed.
Item 5.11 is to award the contract for the sanitary sewer extension to Lake Boulevard. The low bidder is Winona Mechanical with a bid of $32,851.20. Engineer's estimate was $30,890. Move to approve the resolution awarding the contract to Winona Mechanical.
Moved by Debbie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by George. Questions?
Just, just a comment. I, this past contract we awarded and this one, I kind of went over the abstract and, to me, it's, it's interesting how contractors bid, because in some instances, for example, for rock excavation, one contractor charges a unit cost of a hundred and twenty, and the other contractor charges a penny. So if, if anyone is interested in reading something and explaining to me why these are such disparate numbers, I'd be interested in hearing that. But again, the end result is a better bid for all of us, pretty close to the engineer's estimate, and I will support the project.
Take a close look in case there's any change orders.
Well, that's exactly my point as well, that these orders are done and contracts are signed, and let's make sure that they're living up to their contract.
Okay. Any other questions? All favor the motion, which is to award the contract for the sanitary sewer extension to Winona Mechanical. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Item five point twelve is the certification of completion, final estimate, resolution of acceptance for the Pinecrest Sewer and Water Main Extension.
I would move the attached resolution.
Moved by George. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Questions? Okay. Any questions? All favor the motion, which is to approve the certification of completion for the Pinecrest job. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Item five point thirteen is the report on the assessment role for the 2011 East Second Street reconstruction. The resolution would set the public hearing for Tuesday, September fourth.
Move to set the hearing for Tuesday, September fourth?
Second.
Moved by Al, second by Debbie. Questions? All favor the motion, which is to approve the public hearing date. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Item five point fourteen is the resolution ordering assessment of cost for the 2012 miscellaneous utilities. Move to approve the assessment of cost?
Okay. Moved by Debbie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by George. Questions? Comments? All favor the motion, which is to approve the resolution ordering assessments of costs. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Item five point fifteen is the report on the assessment role for the 2012 miscellaneous utilities and the resolution to set the public hearing for Tuesday, September fourth.
Just want to make a comment. I found a mistake in that. I don't know if it's important at this point, but all of the properties in Pinecrest, on page...
We don't have pages, Keith.
Okay. In the table, the last portion of it, all of those should be in a sewer and water access fee, not in a repair fee. That was an internal mistake. So they're just in the wrong table. Starting with Barb Stutzman, everything down below that should slide over into the access fee portion. And engineering will provide a new one for the, to the city clerk.
It's starting on what page of the assessment rule?
Three of three.
So that page, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I just saw. I'm going to sew it.
Okay. Noted by everyone? Okay. So do we have a motion on that?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Some.
Moved by Debbie, second by Michelle. Questions? Okay. All favor of the motion, which is to approve the report on assessment rules as noted. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Item five point sixteen is the report on the assessment role for the 2011 sidewalk project and to set the public hearing for Tuesday, September fourth.
Move to approve to schedule the public hearing for Tuesday, September fourth?
Moved by George, second by Michelle. Questions? All favor the motion, which is to approve the setting of the public hearing as September fourth. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Okay. We'll start with Al. Nothing this evening, Your Honor?
Nothing. Michelle, nothing. Debbie?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. The library drop box, of course, is always locked when the library's not open. And it just kind of came to mind when I was running in there to drop a book off the other day, and of course, it's locked when it's open. And I guess I kind of wondered why, because then you got to go all the way into the building to drop your book off. When you just want to make a quick run, you can still just throw it in the box and then leave without having to go in, or that's, sometimes it's crowded or it's busy, you know, it takes more time. So I don't know if there's a real reason why it's locked when the library's open, you know, because I think it'd be maybe more convenient for folks, you know, like me, it's real quick, or, you know, parking's tight, you run in, you drop a book in there and you leave. So I just want to throw that out. I know I've talked about, brought up the welcome signs a few times lately. I guess I would like to get some word back on if staff has been able to look at. I did ask this a while ago. There are no lights on the east sign. There hasn't been for many moons have passed, and there hasn't been there. You've got two little sub-things, and I would think we could probably do that. I think it'd be a really good thing to welcome in Winona and get some lights on there. I also feel it's in sore, sore need of painting. You know, and I know I've talked about that before, and a one idea, possibly, or staff, however you want to decide this. Now, we do use the, kind of that red maroon color for Winona. Maybe you want to entertain looking at changing that, but it's very faded, you know, it's not bright. And I know for me, also, the vegetation around there, these must be desired. And I know there's a sketch from a local landscaper that I had passed along just as an idea that would be something maybe to spruce that up eventually down the road. I would like to get an update on the paddle sign on Huffin Highway sixty-one. I know, kind of started that initiative, and I'm on the committee as well, and I think it looks great. They've done a lot of work. But my question is, when is Winona going to be put on there? Because that's not on there yet at this point. And actually, at our CIP meeting, it was on my list here, Keith, I mentioned at the meeting, I was going to ask about the old restrooms that are on the east lake, you know, by the Wapishaw Prairie Community Garden, if we were going to do something with that. But it's on our CIP project to do maybe something with that, or what we can do with that old restroom. Because it is, I feel not real attractive. It looks kind of rundown, and it kind of is, I don't know, welcoming there. So if we could do something, and also if that parts of that grand goes through, that would be, I think, a good thing to add, to finish off that beautiful area that's there now. Because that's been, I don't know how old that is. I was there when I was a little girl, long before. I don't know how old that is. So, and just kind of some information, because I've heard this, people kind of ask about it, talk about it recently, so I'm kind of bringing this back. The city does have a, I guess I'll call it a city shade tree report document, that we do have that. And back in oh seven, we received a wonderful gift of trees donated by Hugh Miller. There were three hundred, about three hundred swamp white oak trees that he donated to the city, and also he donated a hundred more in two thousand and eight. And two thousand and nine, Sustain Winona and City Shade, some of that was funded by a grant. There is a report about that and recommendations. It's called the Urban Forest Asset Management Plan. But Sustain Winona and City Shade, they did receive a grant to get seventy hackberry trees, and Boy Scouts have planted them, and of course, the city prepared the site. So we do have a document, a working document, as a guide and report, because I know our tree canopy is really, really important. It's gorgeous, it's beautiful. And then, of course, now with the Emerald Ash Fore and all the plans that we have for that as well, to keep our, our urban forest asset management good and healthy and going forward into the future. And last one, I mentioned also at the CIP meeting, Keith, just as a reminder, I feel a Makado coming from the highway going north, like when you're going to turn forty-three, but that section again going north, even the left turn lane is really bumpy, that's been raised up a lot with all the traffic we have on there. If we can maybe get the state to shave it down again, and maybe in more areas, not just the left turn lane, but it's got some pretty high bumps on there, going northbound on that, and then you take that left on, continuing on a forty-three. Thank you. That's all.
Hey, thank you, Mayor.